To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Ms. Breyer.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the administrative report, Mr. Covington.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll move right on to audience comment. We have two people signed up to address the council. Want to call your name, come to the podium, give your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes. Lori?
Nice to, well, I guess it's not really nice to be back. Lori Madsen, live in Renton, and it's been awhile since I've been here. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, a lot of familiar faces I see and some that I don't remember seeing. So I'll make this, I'll bring you guys up to speed of those who I don't know. I am one of the people in Renton that got the fireworks banned. It took me 15 years standing on this podium four times a year, for 15 years. And then in 2005, after the ban, when Jerry Farley, who was the lobbyist of the Non-Tribal Fireworks Commission, said, "This isn't what the people want. People want fireworks." I worked tirelessly with the fire department to, it was Prop 1, I think it was called, to get that overturned, and we won by over 60 percent. The reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to talk to the mayor and the city council last Monday, but there was no city council meeting, and I left a message for you, Mr. Mayor. It's, when we say that there's a ban, a total ban of fireworks in the city of Renton, I think in 2005, there was a major reduction in fire damage and things of that nature. It was great, 2006 was great. And I think what happened was, people started kind of putting their toes in the water again, trying to light off a few here and there to see what would happen. And because of budgetary cutbacks, I know the fire department has taken a huge hit, not only in education, they used to go to the schools every year and educate the children about not doing fireworks. This is a flyer that got handed out, I think in 2006 or '07. Six. Oops. Can't really see the whole thing, but you kind of get the gist of it. So what's been happening is, it's kind of started to not get back to a level where it was before, but certainly, people are not taking it as seriously because of the lack of enforcement. And that's why I'm standing in front of you today. I, when Chief Daniels was here, he was the chief of the fire department, I used to ride with the fire inspectors. At that time, I think there might have been eight fire inspectors or nine. There are now, I think, five, something like that. For 90, how many people do we have in Renton now? Ninety?
Ninety-three thousand.
Ninety-three thousand people. I remember when I started this, it was like 60,000. Not enough people. Now, I thought the fire department was supposed to be involved with this as well, but what I found out on the Fourth of July was from the fire, from the police department, that they aren't doing anything about that, that that is the fire department's problem, which I didn't think that was the case. So I have people around my neighborhood lighting fireworks off, and I have absolutely no control over it. So I guess I'm standing in front of you once again to see what we can do about that, and I know that the years that I rode with the fire inspectors, what we did mostly was do confiscating of the fireworks. There's, there is supposed to be a zero tolerance, zero. You see fireworks, you take them. You see fireworks, you're supposed to be writing a citation, and that is not happening. It just isn't. I would like to see how many citations were written last year and the year before, and even this year. So I don't know if anybody wants to address this, or...
Well, no, this, the council's not going to address it, but the fire department will be providing us with a recap of the Fourth of July events. Fire chief is here right now, might be able to give a little insight as to some of the things, but they're still in the process of gathering all the data from this past year's events. So, Mark, I don't know if you're prepared to provide any information? Okay, that'd be great.
And what about the police department?
Well, the police department and the fire department work hand in hand on what the priorities are. We've, we've put all of our fire personnel out to investigate all of the fireworks complaints and...
Two trucks, three trucks.
Both.
Yes. Three. Three trucks.
The chief will give a report on what resources are out there.
Yeah.
We do have limited resources.
I know that.
There's no question about that. And we've got thousands of people throughout the entire county with mixed messages coming from one jurisdiction. You cross the street in one area and it's legal, you cross another one, some people don't even know where they are and what's legal and what isn't.
Hmm.
But to the degree that we can, we're enforcing it, we're confiscating, and so anyway, I'll let the chief just give you a little brief...
Okay.
...information, and we'll have something probably within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. When I showed this to, when I called in 911 for a house in my neighborhood that was lighting off explosive devices that are, according to this, a felony, the police came, but they came looking for me because I was on this person's street, sitting in my car, waiting for the police to show up. So they called the police on me because I was just a strange person in their neighborhood. And when I showed the police this flyer that was issued by the fire department, I was told that, it says right here that the use of M-80s and artillery shells is a felony. Anyone found in possession of such devices will be cited and prosecuted. I was told by the police department that that is an untrue statement, that the fire department should have checked before they wrote this on their flyer, which I found really interesting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it is really odd, what you're describing, and I guess I'd just ask the administration to look into that. I, I know that just by, by just a coincidence, I passed a home where there was clearly a police officer scolding children in the driveway for lighting fireworks, and I could just tell that that's what the scene was that was playing out in front of me.
Hmm.
So I know the police department, for the most part, must know what the rules are, but, you know, it's not to say that some officer was confused, but certainly, especially those really loud explosions, those, those types of things, as you know, are illegal everywhere, not just in the city of Renton.
Hmm.
So, you know, I don't want you to think that we're not listening or we don't care. I mean, it...
No, I, I know that you do.
Those types of concerns are important.
I know that you do, but I don't know if you guys really know what's happening out there on the street. These guys know what's happening, but I was told by an officer, "What time do you have to get up and go to work tomorrow?" And I said, "Eight." He suggested I went home and take two Ambien and go to sleep.
Yeah, it's really strange.
Okay, we have, you know, I mean, I, we're not going to do it here on the...
Yeah.
On the camera, but if you want to provide me with the information of when that officer told you that, we'll be glad to talk to him.
And, and they seem to be, the police officers seem to be really irritated, because I was told that there was a murder and a suicide attempt, and that, really, the fireworks, and I, I understand the level of significance, murder, fireworks, I understand that, but there's a lot of new police officers that don't know who I am. Most of the fire department is still the same.
Okay, well, let me have the chief come and give us...
Okay.
...data of what he has.
Do you want me to leave this up here?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of council, Mr. Mayor, Mark Peterson, fire chief, emergency services administrator, we are quite busy on the Fourth this year. We started out before the Fourth, setting up with Valleycom, how we were going to handle all these calls. We knew we were going to get a lot of calls for service for fireworks complaints, and we have limited staffing. We have to use our on-duty fire apparatus, not only for the fireworks complaints, but also other emergency response activity also. So we set up with Valleycom, we opened up the Department Operations Center and staffed it with a firefighter and an office assistant to help go through all the calls and send them out to the different units. We also had all five of our fire inspectors on duty that night. One of them was on the barge during the fireworks show to ensure that they complied with safety and fireworks codes. We also had the other four, we had two teamed up in the North Battalion and two teamed up in the South Battalion, and they actually made over 47 contacts that evening and confiscated well over 50 pounds of fireworks. So we actually had also one individual who kind of got into it with one of our fire investigator, fire inspectors, and he was eventually arrested for getting in our, getting in our way of the enforcement of fireworks code. So we had over 50 pounds confiscated, we issued five $500 citations and one $100 citation. Also during that day, the response ops folks responded to over 136 calls for service, five motor vehicle accidents, five automatic fire alarms, watercraft rescue, 22 EMS responses along with five medic responses, and we had 97 fire-related calls, seven brush fires. In this period of time, while we're out trying to do enforcement, we also responded into Kent and to Quilla to assist them on structure fires that they had. The upside of it is, though, we had no fireworks injuries, no fireworks-related injuries within the city limits. We had no major loss or fire damage due to fireworks within the city, and no major fireworks incidents in the park or injuries in the park. Our display went off with no problems at all. So, yeah, there was some fireworks going off in the city. We're chasing a lot of them. Sometimes you would hear the boom, we'd get the 911 call. By the time we got into the neighborhood, folks would disappear. Of course, they see that big red thing coming down the street, so they go and put their stuff away, and as soon as it goes by, they come back out and light them off again. But short of, you know, hiring 100 people and just sending them out throughout the city, we're only going to scratch the surface on what we're doing. So, that's my report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mark, and I know we'll have a follow-up recap at some point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next is Audrey Adams.
Hello, my name's Audrey Adams at 10939 Southeast 183 Court in Renton. I am so impressed that you're all here today. You're so gorgeous.
Yeah.
I'm impressed that I'm here today, because I have a headache, so I apologize if I'm not my normal self. When I last spoke to you on June 18th, after the meeting, I discovered that there was someone in this room that had four grandchildren, excuse me, three grandchildren with autism. That just hit me like a knife in the gut. And so the next week, on June 25th, I came to you with information about brain damage from fluoride, and basically gave you the, the brief of 92 studies that was compiled by Dr. Bill Osmondson, who's a dentist formerly practicing in Bellevue, now practicing in Oregon. And I'm sure you had an opportunity to look at that, but I don't expect you to understand any more than I do the exact details of those 92 studies. But just looking at them and reading them definitely would put a little question mark of alarm for most people, even if you looked at nine of them. If you looked at all 92 of them, it's pretty scary. Anyway, so I apologize I didn't get a chance to. I didn't get here early enough to sign up to talk to you, but what I wanted to mention, to talk about this week, and I assume you've, you've read everything that I gave you, because I know you're really good about that, what I wanted to talk to you about this week is the precautionary principle and how that applies in this case. I imagine Mr. Covington has already forwarded it on to you, but the precautionary principle states that, and this is straight out of Wikipedia, but you could pull it up in any number of sources, it's a pretty standard. The precautionary principle or precautionary approach states that if an action or policy has a suspected risk of causing harm to the public or to the environment, in the absence of scientific consensus that the action or policy is harmful, the burden of proof that it is not harmful falls on those taking the action. This principle allows policymakers to make discretionary decisions in situations where there is a possibility of harm from taking a particular course or making a certain decision when extensive scientific knowledge on the matter is lacking. Well, there are definitely two sides to the fluoride issue, and I know that there's, there's at least as many people who would come in and say that they think that fluoride is as healthy as vitamin C. But when you apply the precautionary principle and the fact that it is not a choice when you add it to the water, it puts it on a different level. Another thing that I included in today's email through Mr. Covington is the fact that even the EPA union scientists as far back as 1999 put out a statement. I mean, these are the professionals who we rely on to give information to the EPA. Not only did they have a court case, which I can give you more information on later, but I don't want to inundate you, there was a court case that was defending a scientist who said fluoride is not safe, basically, and of course, all backed up with science. But anyway, he was fired for sticking to that principle, and so the union then looked into the situation and essentially took the EPA to court. So the EPA union of professional scientists took the EPA to court and said he was wrongly fired. In fact, there is a problem with fluoridation. And they won. In other words, the union of EPA scientists won against the EPA administration. And what they said, and I, well, actually, they've said a whole lot on the issue, I've only given you one small piece, but I'll quote the very end of the statement, which I sent to you today, which says, "The implication for general public of these calculations is clear. Recent peer-reviewed toxicity data, when applied to EPA's standard method for controlling risks from toxic chemicals, require an immediate halt to the use of the nation's drinking water reservoirs as disposal sites for the toxic waste of the phosphate fertilizer industry." This is 1999. Now, the EPA union of scientists has put out tons of information since then, and I'm trying to figure out a way to download the testimony to the, to Congress by the EPA.
Excuse me, Ms. Adams, you have five minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I move that we give Ms. Adams a few more minutes.
I second.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I'm moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Corman, that we provide more time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Anyway, so the point is, is that we will always have two entirely opposing views of this. One side certainly is influenced by economics. That's not the side that I'm on. There's no, I have zero to gain by coming to you, zero, except knowing that I'm doing the right thing, particularly when every time I turn around, there's another child with neurological damage. I don't know what's happening. I'm not saying it's fluoride, but I'm absolutely certain that it's a piece of the picture. How much of that picture? I don't know. But I do know that the scientists that our EPA relies on to give them information believes the fluoride shouldn't be in the water for the safety of the public. And when you apply the precautionary principle, then it puts a new standard on how we, if we are using water, public water, as an avenue to introduce a drug to any population, we have to apply the precautionary principle, which is a much higher standard than just proving that it is unsafe. And I appreciate the extra time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
I'd just like to say, just so, just so you know, you're not talking to a wall, and we're all listening, you know, I, I've listened with, with interest to the information, and I do believe that our understanding of fluoride has changed immensely over the decades. And frankly, and I, I think probably the council members are spread all over on this, but I tend to agree with, with, with much of what you've presented. But, but I, as I listen to you, I'm thinking, you know, that this is probably, in my mind, it's an issue that should probably go back to the voters at some point. We, they made a decision back in the early 80s, and after 30 more years of data, maybe it's time to bring it back again. But I think one thing that's kind of going on also is we're, we're like on the verge of a really controversial decision that's in front of us, you know, that having to do with libraries, and I think the appetite for even thinking about that right now isn't, isn't real great, but, but all those thoughts are in place, so I want you to know it's not, you know, it's not just falling on deaf ears. So there maybe needs to be a strategy, you know, at some point in the future to, to figure out how to, I would think, to maybe put this back to the voters again.
That is one possibility.
Yep.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Zwicker.
Yeah. I'm just struggling with, as much as I enjoy Ms. Adams coming and visiting us every week, and I do, as she mentioned, there's two sides to the story, and then it also is kind of just hanging out over the council, you know, and Randy makes a suggestion of revotes and that type of thing, which wouldn't be necessary, we could change anything we wanted to, just because the voters approved, didn't have time, it's gone by. I'm kind of thinking that I think would be best is, and again, for a more balanced approach, I know we've talked to some staff who, you know, kind of disagree with some of the presentation and that type of thing. It seems to me that it'd probably be appropriate for a referral into utilities, you know, and obviously, I think as Randy said, it's unnecessarily a topic we need to address immediately, but it would be an opportunity for Ms. Adams to present, you know, her information in a concise manner, let staff weigh in and that type of thing, and let the utilities committee take a look and explore the options. Obviously, we'd need to talk to Larry about, you know, what, what kind of laws change and that type of thing. So kind of not so much to, you know, to stifle Ms. Adams' presentations, but maybe to give them purpose and an opportunity so we could deliberate upon this if it was the will of the council to deliberate. So with that, I kind of think that it might be best for utilities. With that, I make a motion to refer the issue into the utilities. Second.
Good suggestion.
It's been moved by Ms. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that the item of fluoridation be referred to the utilities committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Corman.
And I would just like to say, after that happens, and obviously, there's no timeframe necessity on this, that it would be good to maybe have a balanced committee of the whole presentation somewhere down the line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is moving on to consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Zwicker.
Hearing none, I move that the council concur with the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unfinished business, Ms. Zwicker.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the finance committee has one report.
Finance committee report, approval of claims in payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves for payment on July 9th, 2012, claim vouchers 312972 through 313239, four wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $3,529,855.76, and payroll vouchers include 766 direct deposits and 158 payroll checks totaling $1,610,612.17. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with the finance committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the finance committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I want you to know, I went out of order, so that...
I, you know, and I knew you did, because I, when I did the rounds earlier, I realized I was on the end, so, thank you.
So we'll continue that way, Mr. Prince.
No, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Hey, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have no resolutions to ordinances, so we'll move on to new business. Ms. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one item, next Monday, July 16th, 2012, beginning at 5:00 PM, is committee of the whole. It'll be taking place in the seventh floor conferencing center with two agenda items. One is the business plan, and two is council communications. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, finance committee will meet Monday, July 16th, from 3:30 to 4:30. We have four items, vouchers, emerging issues, and revenue streams, Milts Trucking Utility Bill Adjustment Request, and J&amp;J Rent Utility Bill Adjustment Request.
Okay.
I'll have it.
Thank you. Mr. Prince?
Mr. Mayor, we have a planning and development committee meeting Thursday, July 12th, 3:30, in the council conference room. We'll be dealing Title IV, Docket 8.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
Excuse me. I got a couple issues. First of all, the public safety committee that was scheduled for all day next Monday is canceled.
Thank you. All day.
And then, I got a call this week from me, from a former, former planning commissioner, Larry Brosman, about our vote on putting West Hill on the ballot, and he wanted me to let the council know that he is very upset about it. He feels that it's a, not a good economic decision that the council made. I said I would bring that up. The other, the other thing that I would like to clear up a little confusion from this phone call and a couple others, is people who are current citizens ask, "Well, when do we get to vote?" if they come in, and the answer to that is, current citizens don't get to vote on that, and that's, that's because that's the way the law is. So I wanted to clear, clear that up. And then, secondly, I would like to refer, I make a motion to refer to the public safety committee the topic of social media, media policy in the police department.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Zwicker, that the topic of social media in the police department refer to the public safety committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, next Monday, July 16th, the community services committee will meet at 4:30 to 5:00 in the council conference room. Just one item on the agenda, and that is the second round of neighborhood grants. And then I will just say real briefly that two weeks ago, I went to the South County Council of Human Services annual luncheon, and that Renton received two awards, one to our council member Greg Taylor, and, trying to see what exactly it was called real quick, Human Services and Equity Award for an individual, and the other award for a Renton entity was Luther's Table, received a president's award. So just thought I would bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to announce a committee meeting, Transportation Committee, and just like to thank council member Prince, who, and add a little emphasis to the fact that we're starting planning and development at 3:30, so it's 3:30 to 4:30, different than what's shown on the written info sheet. And then my transportation committee meeting will actually be starting at 4:30 instead of 4 o'clock, and Mr. Prince agreed to that move to accommodate my schedule that day. So Transportation Committee... move to accommodate my schedule that day. So, Transportation Committee meeting, 4:30 to 5:30 on Thursday, July 12th, in the council conference room. Three items on that agenda. First item is 2012 street patch and overlay bid award. Second item is tax-away Bravo construction contract with Reed Middleton. And third item is emerging issues in transportation. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corman. Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So that concludes our meeting, except we have a bunch of scouts in the audience. Do you guys want to address the council?
Come tell us who you are.
Yes, that would be great. Poor guy, this is just awful.
My name is Ben Law, and I'm from Bellevue.
What's your scout troop?
438.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thanks for having us. Want to take other pictures?
Absolutely.
Sure. So what's the wish to the council?
Move to adjourn?
It's moved by Ed Prince, seconded by Ms. Zwicker, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
... video or a short film that highlights some of the topics that they're interested in. It allows us, as a...